I call to order this regular meeting of the Campbell City Council this Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Roll call, please.
Member Bybee.
Present.
Councilmember Fertado.
Here.
Councilmember Schizola.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Landry.
Present. And I want to invite Grace Pam D. from Matri to lead the Pledge of Allegiance in recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Can you please come up? Your friend can come with you if you'd like.
This is jail, sir.
Come up here so we can hear what you're saying.
Up here?
Yeah, right here. And if you would like to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic before which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
And if you can stay there, I'm going to present you with the certificate and the proclamation to grace and recognition of leading the pledge. And then I'm also have a proclamation declaring the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And wrong one. And I would just like to read a little bit about the proclamation. Whereas October is annually recognized as the National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And whereas there is a need to support and amplify prevention programs and community-based strategies to create healthy environments and decrease the likelihood of perpetration, thereby stopping domestic violence from occurring in the first place. And whereas domestic violence affects people of all genders, sexual orientation, age, racial, ethnic, cultural, social, religious, and economic groups in the United States and here in California. And whereas recognizing the need to understand the complexity of violence as perpetrated within the communities and against communities and the fear of many survivors to report to law enforcement. Excuse me. And whereas all communities deserve access to culturally responsive prevention programs and initiatives to improve overall community health and safety by challenging the social nor societal norms that perpetuate violence. And whereas organizations like Matri provide essential services for survivors from South Asian communities, excuse me, helping to bridge the cultural and language gaps. And whereas the city of Campbell recognizes the vital role of all Californians can play in preventing and one day ending domestic violence. I now therefore, Susan M. Landry, the mayor of the city of Campbell, do hereby proclaim October two thousand and twenty-four as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month and encourage others to support organizations like Matri who support women to make informed choices. I want to bring these down.
Stand in front of your bonds and stand up here. So if you'd like to hold this one. If you would like to say something?
Sure.
Good evening, honorable mayor, council members, and the members of the public. My name is Grace Pam D. I am a resident of Campbell since two thousand and nineteen. October is nationally commemorated as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Today I stand here as an advocate for victims and survivors of domestic violence to commemorate Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I represent Matri, an organization devoted to serving victims and survivors of domestic violence since nineteen ninety-one. And I want to take a few moments to talk about an epidemic that is pervasive in our homes, cities, states, country, and all over the world. One in four women, twenty-four point three percent, and one in seven men, thirteen point eight percent, aged eighteen and older in the U.S., had been the victim of severe physical violence by an intimate partner in their lifetime. Intimate partner violence or domestic violence is an ill that exists in all communities, irrespective of culture, religion, sexual orientation, financial status, and immigration realities. Domestic violence is the third-leading cause of homelessness among families in the United States. Research also informs us about the lasting negative impact on children growing up in a household experiencing and witnessing domestic violence. California has higher rates of domestic violence experienced by both men and women when compared to the national average. There were one hundred and three domestic violence-related homicides in California in two thousand and twenty-three, of which seventy-four of the fatalities were female and twenty-nine were male. Domestic violence has significant economic impact in California. In two thousand and twenty-two, the total cost of domestic violence to the state of California was seventy-three point seven billion, about two hundred and thirty dollars per person in the U.S. Last year, Matri provided culturally responsive services to seven hundred and seventy-seven individuals. Organizations around California served more than fifty-seven thousand individuals with life-saving, supporting services. There is a comprehensive plan to address domestic violence in our communities. It is urgent, and we thank the city of Campbell for providing much-needed assistance in many areas, as well as we request to step up the effort. To request the city council and its residents to become members, partners with us in preventing domestic violence and facilitating effective intervention methods if it happens. Here are a few things to consider. One, create a supportive environment for everyone to seek out information and services related to relationship abuse. Two, demand curriculum and practices that uplift healthy relationships at every educational level and professional spaces. Three, enact and support policies that addressed intersectional approach to addressing domestic violence, homelessness, pay equity, reproductive rights, poverty reduction, and banning child marriages, just to name a few. Four, support funding for domestic violence service providers at the federal, state, county, and city levels. Five, rethink law enforcement responses to crisis situations with special focus on stopping brutality against people of color and trainings on domestic violence. Evaluate and improve language access at city facilities. Seven, offer training on cultural responsiveness to various local government employees and agencies. Eight, involve non-governmental organizations as thought partners while planning city activities. And nine, uplift the voices of the minority groups whenever possible as they lack representation in communities and other policymaking spaces. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That was very moving. All right. Thank you very much for coming tonight, and we honor you guys, and I'm glad we can recognize you. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the introduction of the twenty-four twenty-five Campbell Youth Commission and to receive a presentation on their initial work, and the youth commission can come up. I don't know who's speaking, Grace. And I do want to make a statement, too. I want to, I really appreciate you guys being at the State of the City address and helping out with what we were doing.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Landry and members of council. My name is Gracie Farrell, and I'm the Recreation Program Coordinator for the Campbell Recreation Department, and I'm happy to be serving as the staff liaison for our youth commission again this year. I'm excited for our new term with our youth commission. This year, we have a total of fifteen members, ranging from eighth through twelfth grade, and a combination of six returning commissioners and nine new commissioners. It's now my pleasure to introduce this year's chair, Sophie Tuon, who will introduce all of our commissioners and share the commission's initial work plan for this two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five term. Sophie is currently in tenth grade at Westmont High School, and we are excited to have her return again this year for the commission.
Good evening again, honorable mayor and members of the council. I'm a returning commissioner from last year, and it's my honor to serve as the chair of the Campbell Youth Commission for this year's term. We have eleven commissioners here with us tonight, and I would like to take this opportunity to introduce you to them. Commissioners, as I introduce you, please stand. Anisha Maherjin, twelfth grade from Archbishop Midi High School. Archit Jane, twelfth grade from Delmar High School. Ashley Brugel, tenth grade from Notre Dame High School. Ion Raza, tenth grade from Westmont High School. Brandon Kang, eleventh grade from Archbishop Midi. Caleb Kim, eleventh grade from Bellarmine College Prep. Ethan Deveries, eleventh grade from the King's Academy. Jolie Bruseno, twelfth grade from Westmont. Monvik Johar, eleventh grade from Archbishop Midi. Mason Johnson, eleventh grade from Lincoln High School. Miles Anderson, eighth grade Old Orchard. Sumita Hala, ninth grade from Westmont. Sarah Colonghi, tenth grade from Westmont. And Yasmin Day, tenth grade, also from Westmont. Commissioners, please be seated. At this time, I'd like to invite our vice chair, Archit, to the podium as we talk to you guys about this year's work points. Okay, so the commissioners met in August for an orientation retreat to go over goals and objectives for this year and connect as a commission. The commissioners had a lot of great ideas, and we were able to narrow them down into three major working groups that we will be sharing with you tonight.
The first one being health. The goals for this subcommittee include cultivating empowerment and mental and physical wellness for teens and to improve overall safety skills of the community through social and educational events and opportunities. We plan to host another Teen Wellness Day in March that will encompass all things physical and mental health, and we also plan to promote safety awareness via a social media campaign in the new year. The second working group is career and education. The goals for this subcommittee include organizing events that bring various opportunities and awareness to teens and support educational assistance programs through our local schools and libraries. We also plan to offer an opportunities fair for teens to learn about volunteering and job opportunities and find partnership opportunities with our local schools and libraries to highlight educational support for teens. And lastly, the final working subcommittee group revolves around community. The goals for this subcommittee are to empower you to have input on community matters by providing more service opportunities for teens and engaging in stronger social media presence, to bring awareness to community opportunities and spotlights.
In addition to our subcommittee goals that Archit just shared, our commission will be collaborating with the city of Supercupertino's Youth Activity Board and Saratoga's Youth Commission to host Pizza and Politics on October thirtieth at the Cupertino Community Hall. This event is a youth and teen political forum to learn how teens can get involved and ask questions to the local politicians in our area. We are excited to have our very own Mayor Landry participate in the mayor's roundabout segment of the event. There will be two other segments featuring a youth and teen commissioners roundtable and a teen debate with team source from both Campbell and Saratoga.
This concludes the commission's initial work plans for this year. We plan to come back at mid-year with updates of what we've been working on, and then again at the end of their term to recap all of their accomplishments this year. I do want to recognize all of our commissioners for coming out this evening, and I would also like to recognize our chair, Sophie Tuon, as today is also her birthday, so I wanted to do a shout out for Sophie as well. But we're open to any questions that you may have, and thank you for having us.
Thank you very much. It sounds like a great plan and nice ambitions. So greatly appreciated. Does anybody some, any comment or anything? We're doing pretty good up here. So thank you. I'm choking tonight. Thank you again, and I thank you again for your participation in State of the City and for all you guys as members. And happy birthday. All right. Next on the agenda is communications positions, and I see none. Next, we have oral requests. This is the portion of the meeting reserved for people wishing to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Persons wishing to respeak, it would be, we request, we don't request, we would be nice to fill out a speaker card if you so choose. And we have two minutes. The law generally prohibits the council from discussion or taking action on such items. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. And right now, I have three oral request speakers. If there's anybody else who wishes to speak, please let the city clerk know. So I don't know if these are in order, but I have Diana Joseph first.
Hello again. I'm Diana. I am a resident of Campbell. I've been living here for eighteen years. My children came up through Campbell Public Schools. I serve on a Campbell Foundation. Parents live in Campbell. My dad is shooting video right now. I am Jewish. I attend a local synagogue. I've, and I'm here to ask you to put on the agenda a ceasefire resolution for the city of Campbell. I'm here with a number of supporters and friends. Stand up. Yeah. And I was here, I was here in June with a larger group, and there's a larger group paying attention beyond that. I, I, this, the violence that's happening now is devastating. October seventh was devastating, the occupation and violence and long history before that is devastating. And we, our money is going to escalate this conflict through military support. There's at least six hundred thousand dollars of Campbell funds that are, that are passing through as as military support to, to Israel, and we can send a message as Campbell. We can add our name to the rolls of many municipalities that are calling for a ceasefire. I am aware that some of our neighbors have spoken to you or written to you with concern. They don't want you to put a ceasefire on the agenda. And I want to say that dialogue is the way that we move toward positive peace. That's really important that we have these conversations, and I'm asking you to create a space where, where, where we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Matt Hammer.
Good evening, Mayor Landry and Campbell City Council members. Thank you very much for your service to our city. My name is Matt Hammer. I live in the Campbell School Districts. My children have attended schools here, and we love this community. I'm here this evening with friends who, like me, are feeling so bad about the violence happening in Israel, Palestine, and now spreading into Lebanon. So many people have been killed, so many people brutalized, so many are mourning the loss of loved ones. So many innocent sacrificed, so many lives and communities destroyed. At this point, more than forty thousand people have been killed. That's about the population of the city of Campbell. Imagine that for a moment, all the people living in the city of Campbell. So we are here because we feel called to make our voices heard, that this simply must stop. I grew up Jewish. We were proud, active members of our synagogue, Temple Emmanuel in San Jose. I grew up learning about my religion and the state of Israel and the brutality that had been visited upon Jews for so many generations. I was taught the history of our oppression from being slaves in Egypt to the horrors of the Nazis' Final Solution of the Holocaust. I was taught that this history of oppression compels us to speak up and take action for other people who are oppressed, not just on behalf of my family and other Jews, but for the freedom and well-being of all people. We came to you in the spring with the same request. Please consider a resolution calling for an immediate ceasefire. It's amazing how Prime Minister Netanyahu, Netanyahu has played this. We thought back in June that we were on the brink of a ceasefire. Netanyahu has no interest in ending the war that keeps him in power and out of prison for his own crimes. We know that this isn't a typical local issue that the city council addresses, but it deeply impacts many Campbell residents who have loved ones in Palestine and Israel. We're also very concerned that literally hundreds of thousands of dollars of federal, federal taxes from Campbell residents are going to buy weapons that are killing innocent people. More bombs will not make people safe, including Jews in Israel. So we hope that you have been able to create a space for this dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you. And Diana, Dana?
Good evening, Mayor Landry, city council members, city staff. My name is Donia, and I'm a Campbell resident. I'd like to actually open by sharing a story from my brother-in-law, who is an ER physician at Good Sam in El Camino Mountain View. He's been to Gaza twice this past year, and he's actually currently in Lebanon on a medical mission. The story I'm sharing is about three-month-old Massa from Gaza. During my brother-in-law's first trip to Gaza, he treated Massa after she was shot in her leg with an Israeli bullet. Again, Massa is three months old. This was a deliberate and targeted shot by the IDF. I share Massa's story because the evidence is clear. One does not intentionally target children, babies, unless the goal is the destruction of Gaza and its inhabitants, i.e. a genocide. Massa's story is not unique. Literally every single U.S. doctor who has gone to Gaza to volunteer has reported treating children with Israeli bullet wounds. This has been taking place for the past year and will continue unless there is a permanent ceasefire. Some might say there is no reason for, to agendize a ceasefire resolution, as that is an international issue, and Campbell should stick to local issues. But when the bullet that shot Massa was likely funded by the United States, this very much becomes an issue that is relevant to all of us as well. Just as the evidence of the genocide is clear, my ask of you all is to agendize a ceasefire resolution so that you all, as our elected leaders in your positions of power, can have a clear conscience, knowing that you did what your position, saying that there is no reason our country should not demand an end to this genocide, given that we are the ones who are essentially funding it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else who wish to speak on open forum? Seeing none, I will close the oral requests and bring it back to council if anybody would like. Elliot, do you want to make a comment?
Yeah, just with the brief comments, obviously, we can't have a discussion, but I can say that I went door knocking for one of the candidates I endorsed, actually Sophie can vouch for this in the audience here, but literally the very first person that answered the door, that was the number one issue, and I was just shocked by that. And so, you know, we keep seeing people come out from the community. It is very important to a large section of our community, so I think we should direct staff to just put it on the agenda. Let's, let's talk about this. Let's have this safe space. They're going to keep coming back until we do it, that's what I believe.
Thank you very much for coming tonight again. Next is council announcements. Tuesday, October fifth, twenty-four is today. Hope you all turn in your taxes. I rush mine to the mailbox before five o'clock. To accommodate the U.S. election, the November fifth city council meeting has been canceled and has been rescheduled to Wednesday, November sixth, in the chambers at seven P.M. Thank you to first responders. October twenty-eighth is National First Responders Day. This is a day to honor the men and women who act quickly when an emergency is at hand. First responders dedicate their lives to save lives. They are the people who run towards crisis when the rest of the world flees. This day provides you with an opportunity to recognize the first responders in your life. Let them know you appreciate their dedication and sacrifice. Thank you, Campbell Police Department, for your dedication, service every day, and thank you to our fire department also. October is National Disability Awareness Month. America's economy is stronger when every American has an opportunity to thrive and contribute meaningfully. During National Disability Awareness Month, we honor the incredible contributions of disabled Americans to our country and our economy. I want to give the community an update. The county has officially mailed out ballots. I have received mine Friday. And to find your nearest drop box, voting center, or to track the status of your ballot, call or visit Santa Clara County Register of Voters at vote.santaclaracounty.gov/home. And we do have a drop box out in front of City Hall. We have designated parking spaces, so you can rush in and drop off your ballot. So don't forget that we also have the municipal election on November fifth. This includes two council seats in Campbell's districts one and two, and we also have a local ballot measure K. Please remember our municipal election and make informed choices before you vote. Are you interested in advising the council on matters relating to the development and maintenance of public recreation and park facilities? Would you like to provide advice relating to community service programs? Then the Parks and Rec Commission is for you. The city clerk's office is currently accepting applications and will be accepting until Monday, November eleventh at five P.M. For more information, please visit our boards and commission webpage on the city's website at campbellca.gov or call the city clerk's office, four oh eight eight six six two one one seven. Next on our agenda is the consent calendar. These items are taken as one action unless someone pulls an item. Is there any council member, staff, or member from the public who would like to pull an item off of consent? Seeing none?
Okay, I'll pull item number nine. And I'll also make a motion to approve the consent calendar items three, eight.
You have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado.
Aye.
Councilmember Schizola.
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
Aye. And now we'll go to item nine, accept the Jim Stevens memorial donation for Los Catos Creek Trail improvements. And you want to come forward? And this is us to adopt a resolution accepting the monetary donation of $3,000 made by the family and friends honoring the memory of James Stevens to be used for the maintenance and improvements at Los Catos Creek Trail and authorize staff to adjust the budget accordingly. And if you'd like to introduce yourself, you're Mr. Stevens' mother, wife?
Wife.
Wife.
And daughter.
And daughter. Well, welcome.
Linda Stevens, Jim's widow, and I'm his daughter, Toby Nielsen. I'm a former resident of Campbell. I currently live just outside of Campbell, and my parents both lived in Campbell since 2011. We are making this donation in memory of my late father, Jim Stevens, on behalf of his family and friends. My parents moved to California in 2011. I was already living in Campbell. Within a few weeks, my dad got on a bicycle and began exploring. It did not take him long to discover the Los Catos Creek Trail. For several years, my dad worked in downtown San Jose. He loved being able to ride his bike to work. When the bike was no longer an option, he took the light rail to work. He began jogging the parkour loop section of the creek trail from the bridge at Campbell Park to the bridge at Santa Mas Expressway in the evenings or on weekends. After my dad was diagnosed with cancer and treatments began, my parents moved into Timbercove Mobile Home Park right alongside that section of the trail. For the next four years, my parents walked on the Los Catos Creek Trail almost every day. I joined them when I could. During the COVID pandemic, the creek trail was a godsend. Many people took advantage of its accessibility. We could be outdoors in nature with people nearby, yet it was easy to social distance without offending anyone. My dad died in late September 2022. My mom continues to get on the trail most days, and I go again when I can. We can't express how deeply grateful we are to the city of Campbell for developing and maintaining this special resource. And the majority of these funds came in small contributions from my father's friends.
Thank you very much. Does anybody from council have any comments?
Just want to express my condolence, but also thank you very much for your dedication and your donation in memory of your husband and father. It's a very nice way to remember him. It's good to hear that people enjoy and appreciate the park. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Yeah, I want to also thank you for your generous donation. It really helps our city with ongoing maintenance and upgrades to the trail. And it is a really nice tribute to your to your husband and father. And I'm sure that as you walk the trail, that fond memories of him will will always be with you. So thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Anybody else want to make a motion?
I also just wanted to express my appreciation and gratitude and also share with you that just before this meeting today, we heard, we got an update about the state of our parks and green spaces, and in particular, the trail and the many people who appreciate it, that it serves, as well as the need for maintenance to ensure that it can continue to be used. So this donation will have a great impact for many people for years to come. And so, and I just echo the sentiments. Really appreciate your giving back and hope you too and future generations will continue to use the trail.
I mean, it's pretty much all been said. I just want to echo my fellow council members' comments and say thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. And when you go out and enjoy the creek, you'll be able to see your donation. So thank you very much for coming tonight. And now I will take a motion.
My mom has one more thing to say.
I just want to say thank you to all of you for keeping the city running beautifully. I love, I don't get here very often, but I'm very grateful to all of you.
Thank you.
It happened all by itself.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate that you said that. So thank you very much.
So I'll make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution accepting a monetary donation in the amount of $3,000 made by family and friends honoring the memory of Mr. Jim Stevens to be used for the maintenance and improvements to the Los Catos Creek Trail and authorize staff to execute a budget adjustment as necessary.
Second.
You have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado.
Aye.
Councilmember Scazola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
Aye. Thank you, that motion passes. So thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is public hearing and introduction of ordinances, which there are none. Next is new business item 10 is the 2024 Oktoberfest Downtown Campbell Special Event Permit. And we have our city manager, Assistant City Manager, Angelique Dida.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. This is a request by the chamber for a special event permit in the downtown area for its annual Oktoberfest. The staff has reviewed the application and recommends approval of the permit. It will, if approved, allow for the activities to occur this Saturday and Sunday, as they do every October. And as the staff report indicates, it does draw in crowds of upwards of 50,000 over a period of two days. And with that, I won't belabor the issue. I'll just turn it over to the council for any questions. But for your consideration, this evening is the application for the special event permit for the downtown.
Does the council have any questions for Angelique? Seeing none. Does anybody from the public wish to speak? I do see Ken coming down.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Ken Johnson, Executive Director of the Campbell Chamber. Happy to be before you today. We have our 29th Annual Oktoberfest planned for this weekend. We're bringing hopefully 50,000 to 60,000 of our closest friends to come in a very family-friendly environment to enjoy the benefits of Campbell. We're very proud that this is a very community-driven event and also civic. So we're proud to provide space for the Civic Improvement Commission, for the Parks and Recreation Department, for the Police Department, Santa Clara County Fire, and 300 volunteers who will come and give their time to the community to help us put this event on. There'll be over 135 artisans and businesses down Campbell Avenue for you to go and see. You may have noticed your packet was a little bit smaller this year because the way the ordinance is written, last year we were $2,000 under the threshold. This year, we're $2,000 over. So that $4,000 swing means we're not even eligible to ask for any help from the city. Not that we could have gotten it this year, but that, but we're, we obviously in help. So what I'm going to ask is, I would love to see a study session or something we might be able to do with the council to sit down and look at these events. We believe they offer tremendous community benefit and economic development for the city, and I would love for us to have further discussions about how we can keep them going with your, so it works for all of us. Appreciate your time and hope you come out on Saturday and Sunday and have a great time.
I have a question.
Yep.
What if we turn this down tonight, Ken? Your event's on Saturday.
You'd have to probably find a new Chamber of Commerce, because we'd probably have to shut our doors.
I'm being...
I'm just kidding.
I'm giving you a hard time, okay?
I know that, and it's, yeah. But I appreciate the word from the staff and appreciate all you do. So hopefully you come out and enjoy this one, and we promise another safer one.
And I personally do appreciate it. I'm sure some of our council do, but I do appreciate all the effort the chamber does on all these events. And you do bring a big draw to the city, and they are very wonderful, all the ones you put on.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for discussion or a motion.
I will move that the city council adopt a resolution approving the Campbell Chamber of Commerce application for the downtown special event permit for the 2024 Oktoberfest event.
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado.
Aye.
Councilmember Scazola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
Aye. All right, Oktoberfest is on, Ken. Have fun.
And could I add one thing? I think it's time that we, we continue to get these requests, and we have a policy in place. And we, since I've been on the council, have gotten several requests to approve a fee waiver that's greater than what the policy provides. So I think it's time that we provide some direction to staff to look at the policy and possibly make some revisions and come back. I don't know if that, if the council would be willing to provide that direction, but I think that we keep getting put in an awkward position, as far as I'm concerned, to be asked to provide a fee waiver when we have a policy in place. So I think it's time to do that.
And I would agree. Do we need to make a motion on that, Brian? Or you're just? And Bill, can we do that and make that a motion if?
Yeah, you can make a motion to direct it to staff or to agendize it for a future meeting.
Okay, do you want to make the motion, Ann?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we direct staff to look at, to review the special event permit policy.
And bring it back to a future agenda.
Yeah, I'll second.
You have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Bybee.
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado.
Aye.
Councilmember Scazola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
Aye. Thank you. And that was a good gesture from Ken and Ann. All right, next is item 11, the Age Friendly Cities Renewal. And this is Recreation and Community Service Director Natasha Bissell again.
Hi. Hey, Mayor and members of council.
I see Tina over there.
Yes. So in fiscal '24, our department had a work plan item focused on renewing the age-friendly designation. This work began in spring and continued into this fiscal year. And the renewal process for this is quite staff-intensive, and it requires extensive community outreach and to establish new objectives when we're applying for the renewal. The outreach and community input is critical, and our team's dedicated to creating objectives and goals that are actually attainable in the next five years. So nothing too lofty or out of the realm of possibility for us. This outreach effort has been significantly bolstered by our valuable partnership with successful aging solutions and community consulting known as SASE. So their collaboration with West Valley College and their launch of the Senior Guided Pathways Program has been instrumental in enhancing our outreach efforts through this process. So I can't thank them enough. So with that, it's my pleasure to introduce Tina Wong-Earling, who's the Senior Services Supervisor, along with Tyler Taylor, the CEO of SASE, and they will be putting the presentation tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, Mayor Landry and members of city council. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening, and thank you for that very nice introduction, Natasha, and Tyler with me to co-present. It is truly a pleasure. And thank you for advancing the slides, Andrea. Really do appreciate it. So next slide, please. So I'd like to start with giving council some background regarding the age-friendly cities process. So the city of Campbell became age-friendly designated with the World Health Organization back in 2017 as part of a countywide effort for all 15 cities within Santa Clara County that ultimately... Our original five-year action plan consisted of three goals. The first goal was to work in collaboration to develop a West Valley Senior Transportation Program, also known as RIDE, Reach Your Destination Easily. Coincidentally, that is a project that Tyler and his organization, SASE, had launched. It is doing quite well today and operating very successfully. Our second goal was to provide educational programs to increase awareness of the aging process. And our third goal was to create intergenerational programs that connect youth and seniors for meaningful engagement. All three of these goals were successfully implemented, thereby launching the Age Friendly Cities Initiative here in Campbell. So where we are today is the five-year work plan has expired. To renew the Age Friendly City designation, the city needs to do the following: submit an updated five-year work plan, and secondly, provide a letter of support from the mayor. So the renewal process for us to renew the Age Friendly Cities designation is really a two-part process. The first is we conducted a community assessment survey for older adults, also known as COSA. And Tyler will be giving more information in greater detail about the COSA. Secondly, we convened a Campbell key stakeholders group that met over a period of several months, and I will be sharing that later in the presentation. Next slide, please. So the partners that made all this happen really are what you see before you. When we, with the senior, with Successful Aging Solutions and Community Consulting and also West Valley Mission Community College District. When Campbell first earned its original designation back in 2017, we conducted small focus groups and surveyed participants at the adult center, at the community center. For the new, for the renewal process, the community assessment survey for older adults served as a primary tool. Through a generous donation, again, from the Successful Aging Solutions and Community Consulting and the West Valley Mission Community College District, made it possible to survey older adults throughout the entire city, providing a comprehensive survey tool. And now here to present both the Senior Guided Pathways as well as the Community Assessment for Older Adults is Tyler Taylor.
Thank you, Tina. Council, Mayor Landry, Vice Mayor Lopez, and council, very much appreciate the time tonight and the opportunity to address you. I also want to thank you for empowering your city staff, and in particular, Tina, to really pilot this project through and to see it be successful. One of the more challenging things about an implementation like this is getting the right community stakeholders to the table, having the right connections and resources to get the right people at the table. And Tina was able to do that. And she has quite a reputation in the senior services community throughout Santa Clara County, which is why I contacted her about this opportunity. In addition to being the CEO of SASE, I also serve on the Santa Clara County Senior Care Commission. Been on there for eight years, just got reappointed. And I chaired the commission twice and did a lot of work with Santa Clara County in rolling out the age-friendly initiative throughout all 15 cities. RIDE, the launch of the transportation program that serves the city of Campbell, we owe a lot of support or a lot of gratitude to the city of Campbell for helping us launch that. Even though it's no longer a financial obligation of the city, without your initial seed funding, we wouldn't have been able to prove the model and get that launched into a grant from the county, Measure B funding, as well as a 5310 Mobility Management and Operating Assistance Grant from Caltrans and the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. So something that starts off small in your backyard, if it's managed appropriately and it's given the right resources, can actually become something that serves a great deal of people beyond even your own borders. So thank you very much for that. So the reason we're here tonight in talking about this project, Senior Guided Pathways, it's the nation's first program that's centered on the intersection of aging, education, and workforce development. The West Valley Mission Community College District partnered with our organization a few years back to create the framework for this project. And the model really starts with survey data and assessment. The Community Assessment Survey for Older Adults, if I could advance the slide, please, is a statistically valid, randomly sampled, nationally benchmarked survey used all around the nation. It really is a gold standard, and we used it for all of our surveying for the West Valley Mission Community College District service area. And what we learned from that, we take, you know, a lot of it to use to design the coursework that we offer at the community college. We also use it to roadmap and predict services that are needed for older adults and for people who will become older adults in the next 10, 15, and 20 years. And we also provide it as a community benefit to the cities that we survey. Tonight, there just so happens to be a concurrent meeting of the West Valley Mission Community College District Board of Trustees. Otherwise, your representative here would have been here tonight and as well as the president of West Valley College. And so Adrian Gray does send her regards and would like to have me express that this is a part of building the community, giving this data over to the city, which we have the full reports, about 110 pages, which we have given to the rec department and can give to your city. It will help you in countless ways. But in renewing your age-friendly action plan, we look at the statistical validity of the survey. We can extrapolate the data to the general population. We can extrapolate the data to the general population and really help understand and predict what services you might need. So Tina's ability to assemble a really fantastic, um, stakeholders working group. I also want to thank councilmembers Bybee and Fertado for joining those groups at the time that you could. Also, city manager, uh, Brian and his team, they attended many meetings. And this, uh, gentleman back here from the chamber was also at the meeting. So it was really well-attended. Um, putting that together is really what will make something work. And that, uh, I don't want to steal any thunder from Tina, but that group continues to meet and they're doing some great work. I still can advance the slides, please. Some of the things that we, um, look at, uh, are community design, employment and finances, equity and community dimensions, health and wellness, information and assistance, equity and inclusivity, productive activities. So, um, in the city of Campbell, we sent this out to 2,500 homes of people that had a, uh, family member or were the primary homeowner of 60-year-old, 60-year-old or older. And, uh, we were surveyed along these, um, uh, domains of livability. Oh, that's a solid. 443 surveys were completed for a response rate of 15%. So that's a pretty good response rate in this area. We see anywhere between 13 to 21% response rate. So 15% is solid. Again, it's reliable. And, uh, again, this data is compared against national bench, uh, benchmarks. It lets you know how people feel about issues such as housing, employability, um, finances, uh, productive activities, caregiving activities, and so on. And, uh, there are also cross tabs. So you can really drive, you know, drill down into the data quite a bit. Next slide. Some of the key strengths that we noticed about the city of Campbell is that 89% of people were great, living in Campbell as excellent or good. So that's a very positive sign. People love it here. Um, I can tell by the participation from today, seeing the youth commissions, seeing people coming in and being civically engaged. Uh, you all are doing a fantastic job and it's reflected in the data for people over the age of 60. 80% of residents plan to stay in their community throughout their retirement. So not only is it a great place to live, but it's a great place to stay as you get older. The average positive score of 76% for safety. So very high safety ratings, um, in the city. And thank you to the police department for the public safety efforts that the council empowers here. Now, there are some areas of opportunity. And these areas of opportunity are pretty consistent throughout West Valley communities. Um, found, having access to information, understanding where to find things. And our stakeholders working group that Tina was able to assemble did look at the siloing effect of service providers. You know, small nonprofits get in the lane of providing services and they do what they do, they do it well, but they don't always have the opportunity to connect to other agencies efficiently. And so this stakeholders working group, um, just by the nature of them coming together and meeting regularly, is going to help increase that 32% number, uh, a lot higher. And then you also have some other tools that people, once they begin working with each other, understand what they're doing, referral networks start to come together and, uh, you can get a lot of great synergy. So we expect, just by the nature of you engaging in this renewal, that your numbers of, uh, information and access will go up. 24% experienced challenges related to housing. That's not an easy solve. And so we won't dive into that too much tonight, but, um, it's definitely on the forefront of everybody I'm sharing in this room, everyone in the audience and everyone in all of the cities that we survey. It's a tough thing to, um, to navigate. However, it is reflected that people that are out there, that are over the age of 60, experience this and feel like it's an area of need. And then 31% reported having access to quality employment opportunities. That's where Senior Guided Pathways kind of comes into play. After we hit the age of 50, the national statistics tell us that we have a 50% chance of getting a commensurate job if we lose our job after the age of 50. So that's a tough statistic to bear. Um, but in addition to ageism, uh, being a factor in that, in that decision-making, hiring managers by and large respond that older workers are preferable if they have a modern-day skillset and know how to use current-day productivity tools such as Google Suite, AI, ChatGPT, and other things that you can actually pick up as skills. The community college setting is the perfect one to learn skills like that. And so that's why we designed Senior Guided Pathways to be short, curated coursework, six courses or less that will give you an outcome that you're looking for, whether it be work skills, whether it be navigating the healthcare system, uh, enrichment, personal development, um, or physical fitness and health. We designed it in short curated coursework because the value proposition of getting educated, a largely educated population to come back to school is a tough sell. You know, I've been to school, I know the ropes, and maybe I don't want to go back to school. Well, this isn't really going back to school. This is making yourself competitive. This is making sure that you're retaining your value in the workplace and that you do it in a timeframe that you can manage. We, uh, at SASE, we provide technical assistance and help with the enrollment process for those people who need it. Um, and the college has a landing page that explains how Senior Guided Pathways works. So you can go to West Valley College's website and navigate to, uh, the Senior Guided Pathways page and it lays everything out very simply there. But for those people who do need additional help, we provide phone-based help as well as walk-in assistance at our facility. And we can also set that up here in Campbell with Tina's assistance if there's a need and a desire to do so. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so I think I'll go back to Tina for the stakeholders working group, but I just want to again commend the city, um, the council, your staff, and, uh, in particular Tina and, um, uh, the entire team at the rec department. This was one of the easiest implementations that I've done and several. Uh, the team was very organized, well-plugged in, and that just made the world of difference. So thank you all very much.
Uh, thank you so much, Tyler, for, uh, the assistance, um, the survey background and, and really that was a big chunk of, um, being able to conduct a comprehensive, um, community assessment. So step two, um, was the, um, Campbell Key Stakeholders Group that, that we convened. Um, so I wanted to let you know, um, really the, the multitude of professionals, um, from the field of aging, um, that, that attended. We, we had, um, representation from VTA, library, senior housing facilities, safety net programs, legal aid, home health, law enforcement, the fire department, and then, um, of course, our two very own council members as well, were, were in attendance. So they assembled, this group assembled to, to review survey, um, to review survey data, to identify gaps and brainstorm solutions. Um, so key, so again, the key stakeholders convened for three consecutive meetings to learn about the survey and the renewal process, um, and help us prioritize, um, solutions. Next slide, please. So the five-year, uh, work plan, um, after evaluating the results and, and really looking at the feasibility of what types of projects are, are really doable, uh, for, for the work group, um, three, three items under this new five-year work plan, um, um, emerged. So one of the most organic outcomes that came from the stakeholders meeting is this, uh, was the opportunity for these various agencies to, to come together, to work together and network with a common shared goal of, uh, creating a better quality of life for seniors, their families, and, and their caregivers. Um, this resulted in the formation of the Campbell's, uh, senior, uh, Service Providers Network. Everybody at the table really wants to continue working together. Um, it, it really makes for better service providers if you know who the players are. That was really half of it. Um, and, and people all across the room, I mean, every meeting would network with one another. Um, you know, exchange business cards. It was just a wonderful way to interact for the agencies as well. The new collaborative will meet monthly and evaluate feasibility of projects moving forward. The second goal under the five-year work plan is the Senior Guided Pathways, which, um, Tyler explained. It really coincides with the, the survey data, that 31% surveyed reported having access, um, only 31% reported having access to quality employment opportunities. So our partnership with Senior Guided Pathways will really assist in, in helping identify education and job training, um, programs. And then lastly, information and awareness. So the data told us that 30% of surveyed, um, older adults were found to have information access challenges. Um, I've heard that in, in many, many years that I've worked in, in senior services because seniors are everywhere. They're at our community center, they're at the library, they're downtown Campbell, they're at coffee shops. So it depo, it really depends on their point of entry, you know, in identifying services. So we, we actually need to make an effort to go, go to where they are as well. So the, the, um, the collaborative will look at creating efforts to reach, uh, a variety of different seniors, provide educational programs that help seniors, uh, navigate difficult situations. So one of the, um, initial projects that the, the, um, service provider group is looking to launch in 2025 is to create a fraud awareness series. Everybody at the table agrees that fraud affects every single senior and their family. So I'm excited to share that. And finally, um, next steps. Um, so to, again, to renew our age-friendly city designation, we need a letter of support from the mayor. Um, and then I would submit that with the new five-year work plan to renew our age-friendly designation with AARP, which is a local affiliate, who will then submit the, um, final application to the World Health Organization, um, for our renewal. So in closing, I'd like to thank Tyler Taylor again, who, who really, um, was not, what was not only the, the wonderful generous donation of the, of the survey funding, but who worked alongside with me the entire process, served as a, frankly, a free consultant in this process. I, I want to just thank him wholeheartedly for all of his support and, and technical expertise really to, to guide this project. I want to thank the West Valley Mission Community College District, and I think we're looking at thanking them at a, at a future council meeting. I'd like to thank councilmembers Bybee and Fertado for the meetings that you attended, um, and the various stakeholders for participating in this process and their ongoing commitment in creating an age-friendly community here in Campbell. So Tyler and I are here to, uh, take any questions or any comments that you may have.
All right. We're going to start with questions. Is anybody from council have questions? Elliot? Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I just thought maybe for the public's sake, like, in a nutshell, what, oops, what makes, uh, an age-friendly city, you know, like, how would you describe it in as brief an amount of time as possible?
Well, age-friendly is really based on, uh, what they call domains of livability. So that list, uh, that I put up there. And essentially, if you were to boil it down into a nutshell, the cities that we all live in were built by young family, by young people for young families after the industrial revolution. It really wasn't set up for people to live into their 90s. And that's where we are now. So the age-friendly initiative put out by the World Health Organization was essentially saying, assess your, your communities for livability as we get older. If you see gaps, suggest some gaps. We know cities are stretched with limitations on funding and so on. So, you know, be responsive to what your community looks at. And don't try to solve all the problems. Solve a few and work on it. After, uh, three to five years, you reassess your, your steps that you took in your action plan, and then you just keep the process going. In the case of Campbell, you are actually stepping up from where you went last time. You're re, you're putting more in. The Community College District was able to help with the survey, but the, the effort that the city has put in to really assess the gaps and provide some solutions, um, is really a part of that process of becoming age-friendly and just making your community a better place for us all to grow up and grow old.
Amazing. Thank you very much.
Questions? If so, do you?
Um, thank you so much, first off, just for, for the work and, and, and the, the partnership. Can't, can't say enough, enough for that. Um, really great example of collaboration. I'm curious about, um, two of the statistics that you, that were shared, if you can just provide any, some additional context. Uh, one is the 24% um, uh, struggling with, with, with housing. And, you know, as you said, a, a bigger issue than we have time to get into tonight. Um, but I'm just wondering, what if you can contextualize a little bit more what, what that means, just define that a, a little bit. And, and I know you said overall the numbers are pretty similar for the West Valley communities, but if you could just say a little bit more, um, are there any differences there with, with, um, any, any of our neighbors or, or the region to the extent that you know? And then the other one is the, um, the, um, 31% of figure, um, for quality employment opportunities, just a little bit more about how you define that.
Sure. So those topics were, were broad topics that we put up there. Each one of them are kind of aggregated with several questions that are asked in the survey. So in the housing question, um, the two that would be relevant to your, uh, question here are, um, do you have enough money to pay your property taxes? Or is that a problem for you? And so a significant number of people are saying that that's a problem for them. I don't want to quote the number because you do have the actual report and you can, you can drill in on them. The other question is, do you have enough money to meet your daily expenses and stay housed? So that's another question. And a significant number of people are saying that that's tough for them. Um, a lot of the economic questions, some of them have a housing bent, some of them don't. Um, they, you know, kind of crossover between employment and those opportunities. And so, uh, but when it comes to housing, then there's also the, the question of housing affordability. Um, some of them are perceptual questions, not necessarily tied to their own experience, but how they perceive their community to be. Uh, and those are illustrated well, uh, you know, a little bit more in how the question is asked. Uh, so I, I would probably say that there'd be a good, uh, study session there to look at a little deeper dive or maybe to have staff, um, take a look at the thicker report and maybe pull out, uh, more of the detailed information that would be useful to you all in, in those questions. When it comes to employment, the questions there are, uh, essentially, do you have quality, um, employment opportunities? One of the key questions is, uh, at what age do you expect to retire and stop working for money? And by, I think in, in Campbell, the, uh, the numbers, about 67% said it's going to be in their mid 70s. That's even higher in Saratoga, actually, and, um, and, uh, Los Gatos. Uh, in, um, Santa Clara was a little bit lower. Uh, but these are people's perceptions based on the other questions about, are you able to meet your daily expenses? Are you able to pay your property taxes? Um, and if they're struggling with that now, chances are they're going to need to work longer. So we use a lot of that information to determine that, well, if they had a bigger, a better skillset, a more reliable skillset. And we also include bringing employers to the table. There's new certificate programs. I didn't get too deep into the rest of the project, but we're creating new certificate programs at the community college level. And major employers are at the table helping us design that curriculum. So the idea is take the certificate programs, gain employment from those people who helped us design the curriculum since they now have skin in the game for who they employ. So we're just trying to set ourselves up for success. It is for today's people who are over the age of 50, but it's also for all of us. You know, if we're lucky, we will get older, but it shouldn't be a negative experience. And a lot of rooms that I ask, and you know, Tina can attest to this, when you ask people, hey, who in here is looking forward to getting old? You don't see a whole lot of hands go up. And we've got to kind of reverse that trend a little bit. It should be a better experience for us all.
Great. Um, thank you so much. Um, my last question or request would just be, um, I'm, I would actually be real interested in seeing the whole, um, report. Um, it, it wasn't active. Um, so just maybe if that could be forwarded on to staff, uh, I mean, uh, from staff to council.
We just had our Parks Master Plan presentation before the council meeting. Have you had, with your seniors groups and out of the community center, have you had any input on the Parks Master Plan? And what functions or activities they may need one to see in our parks?
So we definitely, um, have, uh, invited our seniors to participate in, in the process. Uh, we've posted in our, our newsletter. We've, um, I know that I've personally invited a, a couple of our, um, our seniors that serve on various commissions. And, um, at the in-person meeting at, uh, in the banquet hall that, that took place, I believe in September, we had a, a few seniors in attendance.
Great. That's great to know. Now that I'm in that class, I'm taking a little more notice here, although I have been there for a while. Okay, great. Um, I'm going to open it to the public. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for discussion or, and/or a motion. Elliot?
Uh, yes. Uh, yeah. So, you know, as statistics suggest, suggest, not just here locally, but nationally, uh, very often seniors struggle, you know, with their fixed incomes to stay housed, like we were just discussing earlier. Uh, so many of them on fixed incomes. And so when the cost of living goes up and they have their fixed income, obviously it becomes more and more of a struggle. And so that's why I'm really looking forward to this. Another thing, uh, that often gets overlooked is our senior population. Rent control can play a very key role in keeping our seniors living here in Campbell. So I'm looking forward to having a discuss, discussion in the future.
I just want to thank Tyler and Tina for your leadership on this, um, collaborative process. It was a great, um, meeting of, you know, the various stakeholders from a wide variety of, of different resources that are available for, for the senior adults. And I want, also want to comment that for the West Valley Mission College, the tuition is free. So that's also a, a, a nice bonus for, um, the senior adults that do want to enroll in some of the, the courses and, and classes that they have.
Well, I just expressed my appreciation also for the opportunity to attend at, uh, one of the meetings, uh, participate. Uh, the stakeholders that you brought there were really very knowledgeable and they all contributed from different points of view. I, I think which helped make our discussion much more robust. And we did break into smaller
And we did break into smaller groups afterwards, sort of covered single areas that we then reported back to the large group with. And so I think it generated good discussion, which allowed you to prepare the report appropriately as a result. And obviously, I think we need to continue this process and certainly support the recommendation.
I think I'm the only one who's still around from seventeen when this first came forward. So I, I've appreciated all your work, Tina, all over these years, and I do appreciate you coming and participating and the fact that some of these services we didn't have to pay for, that certainly adds to it. So I appreciate all the hard work that you guys are doing. And at this point, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move with the city council, accept the report on the update on the city's Age Friendly Cities Initiative, and authorize staff to renew and update the five-year action plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Bybee.
Hi.
Councilmember Furtado.
Hi.
Councilmember Schizola.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lopez. Mayor Landry.
Hi, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Does anybody need a break? We're good? Okay, so we're gonna move on to unfinished business, which is item twelve. An update on utilization of city's remaining ARPA money, and discussion on how to fully obligate and spend any remaining balance by the federally required deadline. And we have our finance director, Will Fuentes.
Actually, I'm gonna introduce Madam Mayor, if that's okay?
That's not on my list here, Brian.
I'm, I'm gonna exercise my, my discretion to, to get us started here. Director, Finance Director Fuentes is here, so is our executive team. So if there's questions about any of these recommendations, we can get the right person in front of you to answer them, for sure. But I'm gonna lead us off by just talking more broadly about where we've been and, and what we're trying to accomplish this evening. I'm not gonna read you all the backgrounds, bullet points here in this slide, but this goes back to two thousand twenty and two, two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two, when we received ARPA funds. And we've had various discussions over the year of how to spend that. I think, generally speaking, the city was very conservative in its spending and, and trying to meter out those ARPA funds over a slow period of time, one to allow us a recovery from the pandemic and the impacts of that pandemic, but also to find really meaningful ways to fund this money that would benefit the community. And, and we've had several discussions, and the, the last one this summer, trying to allocate the, the bulk of the remainder of that, that allocation. And, and that's really the purpose here tonight. As you're aware, the requirement is that we contractually obligate the expenditures by December of this year, the remainder of that money. There is two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars approximately in this money left. The staff report does go through a great deal of detail analyzing some of the existing projects that was authorized, and trying to observe whether or not there, as we contracted for that work, there's any remaining money of those. And you see in the report various contracts for improvements, some of which are at the community center, roofing projects, heater, boiler replacement projects. And then also in the staff report, the recommendations from staff on how to spend this going forward. And these are just recommendations, we're here tonight to hear from the council. The goal of these recommendations, as we talked about this in our senior leadership discussions, was trying to find ways that align with what we've heard from the council. Council clearly wants to find things that's visibly improving the public. We've tried to find ways to improve things that align with our priorities. We've tried to find things that align with deferred maintenance and get them in front of some of the financial burdens that we have on deferred maintenance. We've tried to identify areas, maybe of future expenditures, in which we can maybe pay forward on some of those expenditures, and we've included those in this list as well. And then I wanted at least to highlight in this, there's an attachment to the staff report that is a spreadsheet that goes through all of the years and shows you what's been allocated in what fiscal year, and what's been approved and what's being recommended, and you can kind of see over those years how that money's being expended and what the recommendations are this evening. I had several questions from council members on the recommendations. We're here tonight to be able to answer those questions. I, I think the goal here is that we're not gonna come up with the perfect solution, the perfect dollar amount for every allocation. A lot of times, we, we estimated what we thought was best, based on our experience and, and discussions with the council. But clearly, this isn't a take it or leave it for the council. If there's suggestions or, or other ideas the council has, we'd be glad to consider those. And I've talked to some of you individually about those ideas, and if, we're prepared to address those as, as those questions come up this evening. I think what we're asking for tonight is, is direction from the council. You see that there's no recommendation for a formal resolution or budget amendments. And if you recall, back in July when we did this, we, there, there's too many machinations of how this money might be moved or shifted. And so to do those budget amendments and have numerous variations of a budget amendments here this evening was too difficult to do. But what we'll do is we'll take your direction, we'll move forward and we'll obligate those funds, and we will bring back budget adjustments for you on November nineteenth meeting to reflect any of those decisions that are made here this evening. The one thing that I, I do want to point out with this expenditure, as we move through these and we're contractually trying to obligate these things by December, there's some things that we're still working on contracts for, and I think we will be through the month of November. But one of the recommendations is, as we do that work after this evening, we are asking for the council to authorize us to roll in any of those remaining expenditures that we find may be residual as we do those contracts, into reimbursing us for expenditures in the operating budget, kind of a catch-all, so that we don't leave money on the table come December thirty-first. It's kind of a, just a, I, I would say it's a, it's, it's a literal catch-all for any of those nickels and dimes that may come out of these contract expenditures. But we're here this evening to hear from the council. As I said, there's two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that's remaining that has been allocated, as, as stated in the staff report. I do know that one of the recommendations is talking about camera integration with the school district. And I do know we have Shelley Veramontes, the superintendent from the Campbell Unified School District here this evening. I, I just support that expenditure and speak to that, so I wanted to highlight that among others. The other thing that was of, of big attention was the discussion on the Parklet Grants. And council has awarded some additional money to Parklets. We've now finished that Parklet program, and it's our recommendation of those Parklet programs that ninety-five thousand dollars be returned back into those ARPA funds that aren't gonna be expended. And I mention that because we've talked about Parklets numerous times at this meeting for the public, for transparency. That's not to say that that's more important than the other things in this funding, but I, I call that out because there was some public attention to that. And then I also wanted to mention that, you know, as we talk about the appropriate amount of funding for some of these, and we, maybe we, as a, as a, as a council, the council determines that funding is not appropriate for, for certain recommendations. The question's gonna be, what do we spend that on? And the goal would be to find things, and we're prepared this evening, if we get in that position, to talk about it. But to find things that are what we call shovel-ready, they're ready to go. They wouldn't require us to go out at this point in October and do a, a formal RFP and take the time to go through a request for proposals and gather those proposals. We no longer have time for that. Anything that we pull off the table this evening, any remaining funds that we have this evening for that discussion, should most likely go to things that are shovel-ready, things that we already have contracts for. Things like, for instance, our sidewalk replacement project that we do every year in the city. We already have an existing contract for that and for the eighty-eight ramp replacements for those sidewalks. That would be a really easy expenditure to add money into and add to the scope of that work, either this year or the coming year by a contractor that we already have on hand. And there's probably, probably some other ideas as well, and we can address those. But those are the highlights, I will stop there and recognize that we do have a lot of staff here, our executive team and our finance director. If there's questions from the council, we can solicit those.
Okay, do we have council questions? Sergio?
Thank you so much for, for the approach and just bringing this back and, you know, listening to our concerns, just moving in a timely manner, so, so we don't lose out on the funding. I had a question about a couple of the requests that are, are being brought, brought forward, either for you or the relevant directors. The community center CCTV cameras and integration. I'd just like to hear more about the need, whether there have been existing problems or, or concerns there, and why, I'm not saying I'm against it, but the prioritizing it over other areas where we might install cameras.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'm sorry, I have to turn this on. I'll let the chief come up and speak to those needs, and we'll supplement that response if needed.
Good evening, council, I thank you very much for the question. In regards to the community center, one of the things that we've looked at is both on a criminal side and a limiting liability side of things. And over the last twelve months, we've had two hundred and ninety-eight calls for service at the community center. Those range the gamut of things. But one of the things that we've been dealing with quite frequently are vandalism's going on in the bathroom, skate park, different locations within the community center, as well as burglaries that have happened. And the Public Works Department has spent a considerable amount of time and money fixing those issues. And the police department has tried to be very proactive about preventing some of those things from happening. And as we've talked about technology and how we can leverage the technology to better assist us in keeping the community safe and preventing crime, this was one of the areas that we thought would be extremely beneficial. I think there's even more opportunities because the park bathrooms are getting vandalized. That wasn't included in this proposal, but when we were looking at locations that could have a tremendous impact and, and talking with, with Natasha about the issues going on at the community center and the schools that are there, and obviously the schools are a huge priority for us on the safety perspective. But getting cameras on the campus of the community center so that when crimes are occurring, our officers have real-time information and are, they are able to make tactical decisions when responding, whether that's specifically related to threats to the school, whether that's crimes that are occurring after hours. And additionally, it gives us the opportunity to use it as an investigative tool on solving some of these crimes. So it, it has some added benefits that I think Natasha can talk, talk towards related to potential tenants and the questions of security and the systems that are in place. But the short answer to your question is, there's a significant amount of responses and a significant amount of people that are enjoying our community center. From a liability side, areas like the pool and other areas that, that don't have cameras that will capture the events that are occurring, I think are extremely important to, to both public safety and the city for preventing.
And, and when you mentioned burglaries, is that of, of some of our, our tenants using the, the building?
Yeah, both our tenants and another example was Q-80. There was a burglary in Q-80 where some things were taken and the, the cabinets were destroyed. I know that was a big project for the Public Works Department to come in and make those repairs. Really, one of the big issues are the bathrooms, there's been a lot of vandalism's at the bathrooms. That's a, a difficult area because obviously you can't put cameras inside of the bathrooms. But with this new technology that we're proposing, we can actually have cameras showing the exteriors of the bathrooms and, and put geo fences so that at certain times, if there's movement outside of those bathrooms, say between midnight and six AM, our real-time information center will get that information immediately, allow our officers to respond at that time while those, those incidents occur.
And I, I know we're, we're limited by the timeline in terms of, you know, we want projects that essentially are shovel-ready. Is there an opportunity, or has there been thinking around using CCTV not just to investigate crimes, but as deterrents?
For sure, yeah. And I, I think that's one of the things I'm talking about of, I mean, visually, I think it, it can act as a deterrent. But we've seen lots of crimes happening at, at homes with Ring cameras and different cameras. So I think the deterrent, just having the camera there, is, is a small piece. I think the much bigger piece is having the ability to identify problem areas and us getting information immediately when there's individuals in those problem areas so that we can address issues at the time that, that potential crimes are occurring.
Okay, great, I, I don't have follow-up questions, but yeah.
I just want to speak to the tenant issue, you know, your public schools have lockdown mechanisms, and so that becomes a question regularly for me, from our tenants who are schools and conducting schools on our campus. How do we protect ourselves? They're one-way ins and one-way outs with big glass on the other side. So it would add a level of security and comfort to the schools on our campus, for, for sure.
Okay, thank you. And then my request was for the, or, I'm sorry, my next question for the solar-powered trash bins. You know, I don't, I don't want to get super into the weeds on, on the, on each, each one of these, but I just wanted to understand a little bit more the benefit of doing that versus just having regular trash cans.
Yeah, I couldn't figure out what they're solar powering.
Right, I understand the issue and the complaints we've had, but...
I was like, how do these things work?
Well, thank you for that question, and it seems like I get all fun ones lately. So this is really a type of installation that you may have seen in other, other adjacent local municipalities, and it's probably something that we could have considered, you know, several times over the last few years, but it, it, it probably wasn't quite the priority that things have become lately. You know, we've experienced a lot of trash overflowing issues, we have a lot of downtown events. And now we've got these additional requirements of SB thirteen eighty-three and the whole three-stream separation. So we looked at this as being a, a, perhaps a unique opportunity that we could implement, you know, these, these different types of, different types of receptacles in the downtown area with maybe all three streams. So it's part of an education process, it's also part of a way to keep downtown clean, where you'd have trash recycling and composting. The interesting part about the solar power is that these things have a, have a measure of, of, of compaction so that when somebody throws a pizza box inside or doesn't sit on the top of the trash can, like you've experienced now, and it gets compacted. And so it is a way to, to increase the capacity without increasing the capacity, so to speak, because of, of the compaction issue. And and for the amount of resources that we've identified, we wouldn't jump into this one hundred percent and, and re-change the downtown area. This would, we'd step into this probably as a pilot basis. I'm, I'm envisioning either two or three locations in the downtown area that tend to be our more problematic sites that we could implement this and, and give it a try. And I, I will say that one of our very close neighboring cities, immediately to the south, has these in the downtown area. We've consulted with them, they are working fairly well. So it's, it's something that we see that could be a benefit. And not only could the staff or our contractors that, that actually serve us, but, but the overall result would be helping to keep downtown cleaner, particularly over the weekends, is, is, that's our trouble times.
Yeah, okay, great, I appreciate, thank you. I, I think that's all my questions, just the last thing I'll, I'll bring up for, for Mike.
Wait, Todd, don't go anywhere, I got a question when he's done.
Okay, yeah, I just want to mention this skate park design and related work. I was, I'm a little bit on the fence here, I'm still thinking about the, the previous study session we, we had. Just questioning the, the, the use of that, but, you know, I could see moving forward given that this is work that was previously planned. So originally that was a question, otherwise I would just welcome thoughts from, from colleagues on that, but.
Yeah, why don't we have, Natasha came up. So I was gonna raise a question about the skate park also. So we do have a design that was approved previously for the skate park, and it was basically replacing the equipment that's there, or is it new equipment, different variations of the equipment?
We don't have an approved design, we have an approved project for fiscal twenty-six that is in there. This would enhance that project and get it started a little earlier with a Sourceball vendor that we can utilize.
And have we found them? Because it says here, looking into exp- And have we found them? Because it says here, looking into exploring it.
So yes, we do have a vendor that's on Sourceball that can bypass kind of your bidding options, who can do the outreach. The community outreach would be pretty important as I do not skateboard, nor do I know what amenities. And to answer your question, we have had a lot of involvement actually from skateboarders through the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. They sat for the entire workshop. They've come to community outreach events and they are supplying input. One young kid came to Park and Rec Commission and spoke. He did a whole, he did a design on his own for a project for school. That was the, you know, so there is an investment and also just for the rest of our community center. If we took it away, they would just skate through our whole community center. So having a designated location is ideal for them. So no, there's not an approved design or anything right now. We could just get going with that with the outreach. It could be a hybrid of in-ground builds and above-ground or all above, kind of what they're looking for. My only request is that there's steps.
There's what?
Steps.
Steps?
Yes, that's what they use. Well, the steps is what they use the interior of the community center for and we need that out.
Did watch in the Olympics, the skateboarding. So the money, the $100,000 is to purchase the equipment or to do the study and the design?
It'd be study, design, any components that come out of that that would be above-ground, that would fit into that prior to the, you know, the funded project in fiscal '26. So yeah, we would utilize it the best we could.
Okay, so utilizing the use of cooperative purchasing agreements, you're not really ready to purchase the equipment though. It's, this is just for design, right?
They do the whole package. So they do the design build and the, what do you call it, geotacking? If it's required, if we decide to go down, some skateboard parks are cement only and they go down. So understanding what's underneath there is going to take some time and, you know, getting all that together.
Great, okay. Todd, so the solar panel on the trash can is just basically making it a compactor?
Yes.
Oh, very simple. That was the question. There you go.
I know. Such a short answer from me. Aren't you surprised?
Trying to figure out, what are you doing with solar power on a trash can? Okay, great. I know it's a problem on the weekend. Yes, yes. Okay.
I have questions.
Okay, Anne?
For Natasha on the skate park. Sorry, I didn't realize she had gone back to your seat. I don't know if you were here with the city when the skate park was installed and approved, but it was as a result of a mom and her son coming to the council and saying, hey, we have no place to go for skateboarding and skate park. And that's how it kind of evolved. And it seemed very popular at the time. There was a pretty big demand for it. Is there still, is it still popular and is it well-attended? And it seems to be when I drive by, but.
Yeah, it's very well-attended. You know, things have changed liability-wise for government agencies and skate parks. And so when we first opened it, it was monitored and attended with staff and that's no longer the case. And so the fencing is more of a safety thing because of the street, but doesn't necessarily have to be that same look and design as it was prior. So it gives us a little bit more flexibility. It is heavily used. And like I said, they would find alternative locations, interior of the community center, which is not safe when we have students coming through the hallways and seniors and different things that just, it doesn't mesh well with our, with what's happening inside. So yes, it's very well-attended.
Thank you. And then I have a couple of questions about a couple of the items that ended up on the list as a result of our discussion in July where we were brainstorming and wanting to add or trying to come up with items that would benefit the community. And two of those happen to be the hotel voucher program for the unhoused and the unhoused, the hotel stays for unhoused during inclement weather. And I would appreciate it if staff could, either Brian or Gary, kind of talk about the need for that. What is their demand? How that would impact? We've allocated $225,000 for hotel vouchers and that just seems like a lot of money that we don't really know if that's, if there's a demand or if that's going to be utilized. So I wanted someone to talk about that.
And please. Can I add to that before you stop, start, Rob? So I was going to bring up these items also, and I did talk to Brian ahead of time. So I think you are prepared to answer some of my questions. But my thing is the 225 talks about hotel voucher program for unhoused. But this needs to be managed by somebody. This needs some supportive services around it. Is that the right way to word it, the hotel voucher program? Or is it study, support housing, you know? If this is ARPA and things are technical, I want to make sure we are allocating the money appropriately. And the, my concern is that I have worked on homeless shelters. You cannot just stick a person in a house and expect them to be successful. They need supportive services around what they're doing. So like we have an unhoused person now, what are they doing? Would they manage this program? Would we bring in somebody else? And then it comes down to if we bring in somebody else at the 225, like how much actually goes to the voucher to the person? And what does, what downsides does this have on this program? And if we start handing out vouchers, are we going to get homeless people from everywhere else coming to get a voucher from us? So I think Brian queued you up to some of our questions here. So I'm sure you have the answers. So it's the hotel voucher program for unhoused and the hotel stays for unhoused during inclement weather. I am not questioning or have any issues with the study for the feasibility for the homeless shelter. And we have not picked a site. That would be part of the whole feasibility study. And this is in conjunction with other cities. This is Los Gatos, Saratoga and us are this whole feasibility study, correct?
A lot of questions. I'm just waiting on the pauses.
I'm done.
Okay. I think the first batch of questions was on the hotel voucher program. I think I understand your question there, Landry, on the dynamics of how it'd be managed and the unhoused coordinator and the logistics of that. I'm ready to answer that. Ahead of that question, I did want to make sure I heard the question properly, Councilman, why? Because your question, the cost of the program?
So we've identified $225,000. So what do you entail that providing?
Okay, got it. And this was in the July report. Happy to report back.
Including some coordination with the county and the number of homeless or unhoused that we would be assisting.
Right. So just to remind the council, we do have an unhoused coordinator. You've met him. He can send the pledge. His name's Chris Miranda. He's started, he's actually started case management with our unhoused population. For reference, based on the county's point in time count, our unhoused population has varied between 90 and 170. Most recent one last year, it's about 90 folks in Campbell. There's a parade of different services that are currently provided. The county has contracted with the Bode. I'm not sure if you recognize that service provider. They do outreach case management of our unhoused population and also Amigos does some case management of families, Campbell. The intent on the voucher program, as we brought an unhoused coordinator and knowing we want this person to be successful, was to give him tools to help folks provide access to temporary emergency housing. At this moment, there are no facilities at all in the whole West Valley area to provide temporary emergency housing. There's a pilot program in Los Gatos, I think some of you are familiar with, on inclement weather shelters and motels. And from that idea emerged the idea to partner with our motels to do something similar. The idea behind the hotel voucher program was to again, give him those tools, the thought process behind that. Again, approximately 100, 100 unhoused individuals in Campbell. The thought was at least half of those individuals, 50, again, these are rough estimates, provided with up to 30 nights of stay. That's the maximum you have in a hotel. Over a two-year program, we have to spend the program. Then estimating the cost at the top end, and we'd still have to negotiate with hotels at about $150. So if you add all those numbers up, two-year program, half of our unhoused individuals, up to at least 30 nights, it does equal the number that you have. As we get closer to it right now, to partly answer both questions, we are in conversation with a Bode on could they manage the program? Originally, my thought was our unhoused coordinator would manage this program. I've had three conversations with the assistant town manager of Los Gatos on how they manage their inclement weather shelter program. It's a lot of work. She spends a lot of time coordinating between the hotels, service providers, checking the weather, signing checks, checking on rates. It does take a fair amount of time just to manage this program. So I think our current thought process, knowing a Bode occupies this space now, they've actually worked with the county in Campbell and elsewhere to place individuals in hotels, is to enter in the service agreement with a Bode to have them manage and to the bureaucracy or the logistics and the paperwork with the hotels. And it will free up our unhoused coordinator to do more case management and manage that contract and manage other things. So to answer both questions, that's the thought process behind the dollars that went into this. We do anticipate coming back to in November, if it does work out with the Bode contract. Happy to entertain questions then on the cost and logistics going with that. I'm presuming with any contract, there is a fair amount of, or there is an admin cost. I can't tell you what that is right now. But again, just in terms of knowing from Los Gatos, the time that goes into manage, manage these programs, our professional advice at this point is to have a service provider administer.
You have a follow-up question? Okay, hang on. Let me ask mine first and then you can do yours. So you've said the money, 225 was factored, 50 people up to 30 days over two years. How much is going to get taken away from that now now with our hiring a consultant or a company to help manage the program? Does it, is it, it's going to cut down how many days and how many people?
I don't know the answer to that yet, Mayor Landry. When the service agreement comes before council, again, I haven't asked about and got, is there a 1% to 5% admin overhead? That will be part of the service. I do know this, my follow-up research with some of the motels, our presumption on the motel cost actually might be less than presumed. So we might actually, A, be able to get more hotel rooms out of this, or B, if there's an absorption rate between that assumption and the admin cost. I don't have an answer to that yet.
And where do we factor in the needs for public service? If we're bringing more people in, we're housing more people, there's probably going to be more police calls, more service requests. Does that factor into this budget at all? You know, how, what? Because I live around by Motel 6's. The neighbors were very happy it was so successful, but they had 24-hour security guard. They had support services. They brought in meals. That, you know, that all takes away from this budget. So I don't want to see us impact with this money and then now need to bring in police, fire, whoever else may be needed to implement this program. So that's why, sorry, that's why I'm trying to ask, like, how much is actually going to end up with the person getting the bed for the night versus all the extra costs, what we're doing and all that data?
Well, I'll answer that first. Yeah, my, the presumptions of this program and the service contract is the numbers I gave you will be delivered. That up to 50 individuals, being up to 30 days over two years, will be provided to this service. Our unhoused coordinator does and will, and Bode will, work with service agencies, provide wraparound services. And keep in mind, it's not only folks coming off the street. I mean, these are also folks that might be one paycheck away from couch surfing and two homelessness. We do do some funding for a rapid rehousing program with the county that does this, but I think it's also targeting that population. Just keep those people in a place that's not on the street. So to answer your question, I think there's two parts. One is there would be wraparound services that is provided with that. That's not coming out of this budget. That would be coordinated with the county and the wraparound services provided. Two, I don't know the, I was trying to understand the fire and service question behind this. I don't.
Well, like at Motel 6, they had to have police make numerous calls there. I think one person actually died and fire had to show up. So I'm just worried, like, what staff costs are going to be associated or are we going to have other staff issues that come out of this whole program?
I can't answer that. I mean, I think there's two parts to that question. We're taking an individual that either A is at risk of being homeless and would be otherwise in a tent somewhere down the street, or someone who's in a tent down the street and putting them in a temporary housing place to hopefully get access to housing. So comparing the first responder needs of those two, if you ask my professional opinion, I think they're more stable in a temporary housing place. I don't know if there's data or metrics that could be referenced, but I don't have before you that says somehow putting these folks in a temporary housing situation with some wraparound services at Motel 6 increases first responder demand of some sort. Compared to the existing conditions where we have folks on the street and we get service calls all the time because I'll just say folks, you know, there could be challenges there.
Okay, Dan, you had.
Well, I have some of the same questions and comments. It seems like there's a lot of things that are unanswered. This is all too nebulous. I don't know what you mean about this company managing. What are they going to manage? I mean, it sounds like administrative kind of things. People who are homeless or on the verge of homeless really don't profit very much from one or two nights staying in a motel. I mean, they would need like six months' worth of housing to help them get on their feet and to sort of get going and so that we could really help them. But providing them just a room for one or two nights, you know, for an emergency, hot or cold temperatures and things like that. But just to sort of give our homeless coordinator tools to work with, I don't see that it's really solving or addressing the problem. And we're proposing to spend $200,000 on this where we have so many questions. At least I do. It seems like colleagues do or some. And I'm just concerned about that, just turning it over to a management company and say, okay, manage it. What does that really mean? I think we need a more thorough evaluation of this before we just allocate money to something that we haven't really studied very much and all the ramifications about it.
Yeah, I think Dan just said it perfectly. I didn't know that we didn't have this much information, you know? So I do feel nervous about allocating that much money. Like, I'm a fan of this kind of program. However, just having, you know, so many unanswered questions, and I know we got to make it a decision quick, but I just echo the concerns that I'm hearing tonight. And so I guess if I have a question, it would be like, well, I mean, this is where we get to the point perhaps where, where would that money go towards? Obviously, we don't want to lose it. Anyone? I mean, I don't know who to ask about that exactly. Are there any other shovel-ready projects that are like right below?
Brian, can I just ask real quick? Tonight, we're making discussion items to come back later to council to make a decision later. We have to make an allocation by December 31st, right?
We're asking for your direction on those allocations this evening. As a follow-up to that, we'll bring back real budget adjustments to reflect things. And you hear some things that we're contracting for. This is one of them, that you'll see a contract come back before the council. So you see those actual costs. So there's perhaps another bite at the apple when you see that, if you want to wait to that. But time's short to allocate. But whether we allocate now or we change our mind when we see the contract in a month, it does have to be spent, as Elliot alluded to and I mentioned earlier, as a shovel-ready project. We do have several projects that are ongoing city maintenance issues and deferred maintenance, like our sidewalks programs and our transition ramps that we already have a contract in place. We could add to that scope very easily and it would allow the city to save money that we would spend in future years in those programs.
And any money left over, if we don't pick a specific project, we can dedicate it to the operating budget?
Correct.
Okay. And can we break this down and maybe, boy, I'm losing my voice tonight. Could we break it down to where we had the study? Because there is a lot of unanswered questions that, like, we're going to be rushing to do this. Would it be appropriate then to either lower the amount or say instead of a housing voucher program to say the study or like the feasibility, the other one has the feasibility of a shelter? To me, it seems like we're to the point where this should really be a study more than, I just, I'm worried what we're calling it and what we're going to use the dollars.
Well, it's sort of, it's sort of, is a sort of a pilot program because we're adopting something new. We're not sure it's going to work. So I think anything we do in this area is going to have to pivot as we go through it and adjust. But I would suggest that perhaps if that's an area that council's still interested in, but you're not sure on the amount. But I, I would suggest that perhaps if that's an area that council is still interested in, but you're not sure on the amount, look at an appropriate amount. And we can discuss that this evening. And then we can further fine tune that if you're going to allocate some of that money once we bring that contract back. So you understand what that overhead is. And if there's any remaining money in November, when we bring that back, we can wrap that in into one of those existing projects. As I mentioned, the sidewalk project, the ADA project and/or operating budget.
Well, it's kind of, kind of more of a comment really, but are we commenting now?
We have not opened it to the public yet, so we're kind of a little bit making comments, but asking questions.
I have more questions. Rob, do you mind coming back up please? Thank you. So there's also another item zero one five, which is the hotel stays for the unhoused during inclement weather. Can you talk a little bit about that? Is that more of something that's in the toolbox for the unhoused coordinator? So that if he encounters an unhoused person that needs to get shelter during a storm or during cold weather, that they, he, he's got that readily available? Is that a fair assessment of that line item?
It is, and I, and I guess hearing questions from the council and all this. So that program is modeled off an existing program that exists in Los Gatos. So it's been, Los Gatos has run this, I think, for at least one season, it might be two. And, and we modeled it off of that program where they have agreements with two to three motels. And the whole point is there's a threshold in the winter when it gets, you know, so cold and rainy outside, it just becomes cold to the outside. And there's a threshold the county actually establishes when shelters open during that. So the idea is because the West Valley doesn't have a shelter, that the contract is with hotels to instead open rooms available to the unhoused, to unhoused folks as case managed by our unhoused coordinator to allow them to use those rooms during that. So, so to answer your question, he would manage the program, he's doing case management and assess, you know, folks that would need in those winter days to get off the street and get hotels and, and use that, use the money in that program.
And that would be for a shorter stay, like a couple of days or?
That is correct.
One night?
Yeah.
But you mentioned that Los Gatos, their staff says it's an intensive program to?
It is, yeah. I talked with the assistant town manager a few times on how they run it. It's, it's very, it's labor intensive on coordinating that program. And I just, so again, knowing that and knowing that there's, and they, they work closely with service providers in Los Gatos. It's mostly the religious organizations. But knowing we have at least two service providers here that do case management, work with motels today, that one is ABOE. The idea would be to, to let, to use them as a resource and manage it.
And does Los Gatos have an un, a dedicated unhoused coordinator or is it other staff that administers?
Yeah, they do not, it's administered by the, by the assistant town manager.
Thank you.
One, one suggestion, if, because I know there's a lot of hesitation on the sticker shop with, with the number. So I mean, if, if the council is looking, and from my professional opinion, I mean, this is a tool, I think our unhoused coordinator would say, well, it does help folks get into temporary housing with wraparound services. I was looking at how we calculated the numbers. I mean, a landing point might be just logically, if you took half of our population unhoused, which is fifty, and instead of thirty days, a presumption of cutting that half into two weeks, which might be a more reasonable number over a two day period, that would reduce the cost of the program down to a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So again, trying to help council, if you're looking at, this is a very expensive program, we don't know a lot about it. Professional staff's opinion, we do think it will move the needle, but not wanting to invest so much money into a program which is testing out. I think there's logic behind dropping that number to a lower point where I think it would still make a difference, but there's not such a huge commitment.
Thank you. Do you have any more questions? Elliot?
I do have one actually. So I was wondering, has there been an increase in the unhoused population in Los Gatos since they introduced this program?
I, you know, I, to me, to directly answer that with a straight face, I could not. Anecdotally, the data I've seen, the answers, I haven't seen the answer being yes. So I think overall, the, the numbers countywide have, have increased. But I don't think there's any data that shows a direct, I guess the issue would be if you provide more of these services in the cities and they're attractive.
Right.
And your unhoused population increases. And none of the data I've seen so far supports that for the Los Gatos program.
Thank you.
Oh, you haven't, you have any questions?
So good evening. You know, one board meeting a week isn't enough for me, so I thought it would come out tonight. Happy to have you join us on Thursday if you'd like. So I've had the pleasure of meeting most of you, and so it's nice to see you again, mayor and council members. And I just wanted to speak to one of the items that is mentioned here. And I, we have a great opportunity tonight, I believe, as I make this request of you, that we continue to bolster our partnership with the city of Campbell and the Campbell Police Department. And I would like to request your support in funding a real time information center that will enable the integration of our existing cameras into the police department system. As you are likely aware, we have invested significant amounts of money in cameras and other safety equipment across our schools to enhance the safety and security of students and staff. However, to maximize the effectiveness of these cameras, it's crucial that we integrate them with the police department system, which will allow for real time monitoring and rapid response in the event of a school safety incident that would require police involvement. By funding this real time information center, we can ensure that our schools are better protected and that our valuable resources are saved during critical moments. The ability to provide immediate access to live camera feeds will significantly improve the coordination between our school administrators and law enforcement, ultimately enhancing the safety of our entire community. We believe that this initiative is a necessary step towards creating a safer environment for our students and staff. And I kindly asked that you would support the funding of this important project, which will have a lasting positive impact on our schools and our broader community. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, thanks for coming. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor Landry and City Council. I hope you all are doing well. I recognize this is not an easy decision to make, so I just want to say thank you. A couple of things I wanted to mention. First, about the skateboard park, I was also at the Parks and Rec Master Plan community meeting, and I was at a table with two young men and they were talking about how much they love the skate park. And they had some suggestions I just wanted to bring to life. One was there was no water fountain nearby for them. I don't know if that's in the plan, but that would be great. They also had talked about some theft that was, that was going on. So maybe having lockers there for them to put their things away when they are skateboarding, which is some ideas. I also wanted to mention the changing tables for, for babies again. I hope that's, that's being considered. I actually know somebody who was here recently with, with a baby and there were no changing tables in the bathrooms and had to change the diaper on, on a table here. So, and then I actually, oh, she left. But I work at a Campbell Union School District school now, and there was actually recent theft a month or so ago, and we all had to get new locks. So all great things, and I know whatever, whatever choice you make, we're, we're going to be helping the community. But I just wanted to talk about this. Thank you.
Thank you, and I do remember the two young gentlemen, the drinking fountain and the lockers. Thanks for reminding us. All right, anybody else from the public who wishes to speak? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for further council discussion. Anybody like to start? Dan?
Just made a couple of initial comments. First of all, I, I really would like us to support the skate park effort. I think that skate park is used a lot. I go by there a lot, there's a lot of kids there all the time. I think it's important for us to do something for youth, kind of spread out the, the wealth that we have in the city in a sense of, I always look at sort of the balance of services to a variety of needs the city has. And that equipment that's there now definitely is old, it's been there for quite some time. And I don't have any ideas of what the best equipment is, but something like a study would reveal that to make it a, I think, a more effective, useful project. And I think as a compromise to what the planning director said, I think cutting the budget roughly in half from two hundred to a hundred, whatever it is, thousand or so would be a better approach initially until we had a much more thorough study of that whole program and how we could best help. I mean, we all want to help the homeless. Nobody wants to see people out on the street for their own benefit, not just because we don't like to see it, but we don't want them to suffer. But we have to do it in a, a way that hopefully will generate some real progress, which does require more than just, just the house itself, which I think we all realize. Those are my two initial comments.
Yeah, so building up what a council member for Todd was saying, we did obviously authorize hundred thousand dollars towards, you know, the shelter feasibility for the West Valley. I, I think that's one of the most amazing things we've done, some bygone council. And I think that perhaps if we did manage to do, yeah, it did, it did seem like a big bite of the apple, the, you know, near quarter of a million dollars. But when I'm, when it's down more than a hundred, you add that to the other hundred in basically the same realm, that's near quarter million, if I'm doing my math right. And so that's a lot of, you know, potential to help our unhoused population. So I, I am much more willing to, to go with the, you know, reduction, just because we don't, we have a lot of unanswered questions still.
I, I deeply appreciate the discussion. It's been informative for me to hear more about staff for, let's call it two hundred quarter million for some of the, the unhoused programs. Just, just thinking aloud a suggestion maybe for, for next time that the discussion comes up, given the interest and, and that it was helpful for, for, for me to hear more of the thinking behind how we got to the numbers. There may be even just a one page additional informational memo summarizing and distinguishing also between the different programs. Not, not, not a criticism of, of staff, but I think that would help just make sure that, that we're on the same page with regards to the information going in. I, I, I'm going to ask my colleagues to consider at this point tonight, keeping the amount that's in there for this reason. I think the questions are appropriate because we have a duty to the public to make sure that we're spending the, our public dollars in a responsible way. And, and I understand that there are some unanswered questions. The biggest one for me that I'm concerned about at this point is, as Mayor Landry raised, about the contract cost. It sounds like given the staff workload, the administrative workload, the, 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 it sounds like that is both needed and that that is a complete question mark at, at this point. And so that could have a, a big impact. But I think to reduce the amount in half at this point, i- if, if moving forward with a quarter million it would be on the basis of unanswered questions, to reduce it at this point would be on the basis of those same unanswered questions. We don't have more data showing that one point two five, a hundred twenty-five thousand would be the appropriate amount, that that is a, a better amount, that better fits the need than two hundred fifty thousand. It, it, it's just that we'd be a little more comfortable with it because it's a smaller number. But I don't think that's any more of a database decision at this point. I think given what I've heard, what, what we heard from the city manager about where we are at the, in the process, that regardless of the number that, that we pick on tonight, this is kind of going to come back and we'll have the contract in front of us. I think that'd be the appropriate point at, at that point, once we actually have more information. If we need to, I would fully support cutting it in half, cutting it by more or less. I just don't, I, I don't have the basis for, for the decision to cut it in half tonight anymore than, than I, I do for, for any other amount. So I, I personally believe that'd be premature. I think either way, we'll get that next step when we have more information to make a more informed decision. And I think that would be the appropriate point if we need to, to, to explore cutting it down. But I, I, I think I just, as I've said before with the ARPA process, this is a really, in my view, a unique opportunity that doesn't come along very often in, with government agencies, especially given what we all know about a structural deficit that, that we're trying to, to address. But I think given that this is federal funding that was really meant to address the needs that, and, and the pain in the community through COVID, that we have the opportunity to do something that might be more of a pilot program, that I think once we no longer have this federal ARPA funding, there's an even higher, all the questions and the scrutiny that, that we're asking, I, I think there's even, even a higher threshold when it's, it's our city dollars from local sources that are competing against all our other city needs. And then it gets more difficult, not, not less. And so I think this is the time to do that experiment that, you know, that we think is going to address a need is, is what I'm, I'm hearing from staff. But that I, I think we're going to learn and then adjust accordingly. But I think in the normal course of business, absent that special funding, it becomes more difficult to run those kind of pilots. So, so that would be my, my strong request at this point, just to consider for, for tonight's moving, moving along what, what's in there, giving us the option. Once we have more information, if we need to reduce that amount, I'd like to know the contract cost before finalizing. But, but that would be my, my request tonight. And just the last thing I'll say is I fully support moving along with the skate park. Thank you, Natasha, for the information and all my colleagues on, on the use. It's been educational for me, and so I, I appreciate that. I think that'd be a great use forward.
So I'm not going to support the, the hotel voucher. I, at this point, I, I, I just don't, I'm not comfortable. I think there's too many unanswered questions. And for that amount of money, even though it is ARPA money, I, I still think that we, we have a lot of unfunded needs in our city with other projects that could benefit from, from the ARPA money. And I, I, Rob mentioned that, you know, there's fifteen potential unhoused candidates that would, could benefit from, from that program. But how do you know that? And, and from what I've heard a lot about the unhouses, that they don't really want to be in, not a shelter, but in, in housing. They, they, they refuse it. So it's really hard to predict or understand or know what, how many people would, would take advantage, would actually take advantage of it. And I, I think it's much more important for our unhoused coordinator to get on board and, and get a cycle of experience and some data to, to under, so that we can better, or I can better understand really what our unhoused population is and what the needs are and, and allow him to have the, the vouchers for the inclement weather so that when in his dealings with, with the unhoused, he has something in his toolbox where he can help, help them on, on a limited basis. But until we have more data about what our unhoused population is and what the real need is, I just don't, I can't justify the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars budget for it.
Thank you. I totally support the skate park, that's absolutely wonderful. I want baby changing tables in city hall, at least two, a man and a woman bathroom. I would, I don't know how much it would cost to add a couple of baby changing, couple thousand, but I would really support that. I know it's been issues not wanting to have a change on the table in the council. I'm very concerned about, we're titling this a voucher program for unhoused, but they're not really, all the money is going to vouchers. And I don't have a clear understanding, and I don't think anybody else does, the full impact of what this program would be about. And I would rather see either half or less of the money right now to be part of the study. I mean, you come back with ABOE with a contract, but there's all these unanswered questions. I don't think we're ready to have a contract. I would rather have it retitled like the feasibility that, the feasibility of unhoused vouchers or something like that to really study it in more detail. And we're, we're down to what, three council meetings, four council meetings to get all this approved? And I don't think we're going to have the data to allocate this in time unless you think we can. And I don't think we're gonna have the data to allocate this in time, unless you think we can. But I would, when you come back, give a better sense of the money, addressing Sergio, addressing Elliot, and all of us. To what this really entails. And I think it is a lot of money to be spent without knowing more about the plan. And we have things like ADA, I mean, we're still waiting for ADA counters here in City Hall and ADA ramps. And things, improvements at the community center. We just heard a whole bit about the deficiencies out there. So I would like to see a better assessment of that quarter million. Elliot, you have another.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on that. So as we've been having this discussion, the thought crossed my mind. Even though we don't really know the answer of like, oh, having a voucher program will attract more unhoused populace, transit, et cetera. Which would of course add the cost to the cities among many other things. But if we could have, just for an example, like, okay, I'm also a hundred percent supportive of the skate park. And if we made like the most amazing skate park, that would be something that would attract people to Campbell that would come here. So I'm kind of seeing it as like the potential of, you know, what can we do with that quarter million? I'm not saying put it into the skate park completely, but just as a fun little idea, like what if you did that? And you had the most amazing skate park, it attracts people here, they come to Campbell, they spend their money. That money ultimately, the sales tax can be used for services and programs and infrastructure. And I'm also very much into always like, also being addressed here is that. Yeah, we have a lot of infrastructure, basic infrastructure, like the changing tables, et cetera. That need to be focused on, I think, too. Because and it all ultimately boils down for me that unanswered questions just makes me nervous, a big chunk of money to just. Oh yeah, let's go for it, you know, it's like, yes, I understand it's a pilot program. But I would hate to, at the end of it, it become an utter failure, you know, or half, even half successful. Or, you know, not really address the issue that we want to address. We want, we all want to help address this issue. But it just makes me nervous, too much money in my opinion, to not know everything yet. And those are all my comments.
Yeah, and I hope the public doesn't think we're not supporting helping the unhoused. That's not the issue. I totally want to support our unhoused population, but I haven't seen yet that this is gonna work. And I want to make sure this is a lot of money, that it is a successful program. And that's why I'd rather see it as the study than actually the vouchers. I support the inclement weather part of it, the thirty-five thousand and the hundred to the feasibility for the shelter. Does anybody have any other comments? And I see your mics on. So do you have enough information now to move forward?
I'm a little bit confused what we're doing with the unhoused voucher program. I've heard the spectrum from nothing to leave it until we bring back a contract to cut it in half, to changing the name. So I'm not sure where we are with that one. I think the rest is clear to me. So I would look for direction in the council and it'd be appropriate. Once we've got that, if there's consensus, the council that we take a motion, direct staff. To come back with the appropriate budget amendments as approved by the council.
Well, I think we are all over the place because we don't know what the program's gonna be. So it's a, who's first?
So the status quo is, is councils already allocated that money in there by previous action in July. That's the way it stands now. Subject to the council not taking any action, that will remain. We would bring back the contract for a bode in November, the November nineteenth meeting. You could take action then, or you could take action this evening to reduce that now. But the status quo is that, we were previously directed in July to add that money in there. So we would take direction from the council if you would want to change that position.
Okay, you need more comment on the topic?
Well, what we can do, it seems, we can approve tonight's suggested spending of the two hundred and ninety-five thousand. Whatever that number is, yeah. You know, approve the projects that were on the slide and that is in our report. And then we, if we were so inclined, we could approve the roughly one hundred and some odd thousand. For the homeless and ask staff for a recommendation for how we might best spend the other. Now, the other roughly one hundred thousand that we're temporarily withholding.
And it would be our suggestion that you put that into your sidewalk program, your ADA access ramp program. Where we have existing contracts, so that part's easy. If that's the will of the council, that would be our recommendation. If that's the, the appropriate motion would be to, to, to. To approve staff's recommendation, subject to the unhoused voucher program being reduced from two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Down to a hundred and twelve thousand and direct staff to come back with budget amendments to do those things.
And to have a better understanding of what we are getting out of the program.
And I'm sorry, and the remainder of that two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars be allocated into the sidewalk ADA transition project.
But I still want to make sure when this comes back of the, even if it goes down to a hundred and twelve, what that really is. Like, is it just hiring the consultant? Is it study?
We'll give you a better understanding of what that is in November when we bring this back.
So can we do this as two motions then? So the first motion would be to receive the update from staff and the allocation of the projects that are listed here. That's the motion as written. And then make a second motion of how to deal with this extra money.
I would modify that motion to say, to approve staff's recommendation. With the exception of the unhoused voucher program, reducing that allocation to a hundred and twelve thousand. And putting the remainder of those funds into the sidewalk ADA transition fund project.
But can I just say, someone make a motion, so moved? The other.
Second, second.
I mean, Bill, are we okay now? Do we know the?
Very well, actually.
Yeah, you did. So the motion would be recommend action on the staff motion with adding what Brian said about the.
So let me try this one more time. And if it's the pleasure of the council, then you could just make that motion. That the council approves staff's recommendation with the exception of the unhoused voucher program. That allocation be reduced from the proposed amount down to a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And the remainder of those funds be put into our sidewalk maintenance and ADA transition. Or sidewalk and curb ramp program.
Okay. I'm making that motion. One of us has to say.
I will make that motion.
Per what Brian said. Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second the motion.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bybee. So I support everything but the voucher program, so I guess it's an O for me.
Well, that was why I was trying to make it two motions.
Sorry, Councilmember Bybee, I didn't mean to put you in that position. I wasn't thinking through that machination. I apologize. So if it's better to do two separate motions, to approve stack recommendations with the exception of the unhoused voucher program, period. We'll take that motion and then a second motion of what to do with the unhoused program. I apologize, Councilmember Bybee.
So does the motion maker make that?
Yes, I will make that motion.
Modify my.
Modify your, okay, so we have a modified motion. With everything in the staff report and removing the two twenty-five. Out of the previously allocated, right, okay. So now let's do roll call again.
No, I think the two twenty-five is a separate motion.
So let me just be clear, the motion was to approve staff recommendations with the exception of the unhoused voucher program.
Right, that's two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
So that would be the appropriate motion, the first motion.
Councilmember Bybee.
Hi.
Councilmember Fertato. Councilmember Scazola. Vice Mayor Lopez. Mayor Landry.
All right, okay, we got that motion passed. Now, the second motion would be. Regarding the two twenty.
Would be to, with the staff recommendation on the unhoused voucher program, to reduce the allocation from two hundred and twenty-five thousand. To a hundred and twelve thousand, with the remainder of those funds to be allocated to the sidewalk and curb ramp.
I guess I'll make that.
Do we say anything? Because I'm worried that we're calling it a voucher program when we're really gonna be spending money on a consulting, something or other.
As we bring that, we bring that contract back, we can come up with a better description of the program. I don't think that takes a motion, but we'll consider that as we bring back.
So moved?
Yeah, so moved.
We have a second on the so moved?
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bybee.
No.
Councilmember Fertato. Councilmember Scazola. Vice Mayor Lopez.
No.
Mayor Landry.
Aye, that motion passes. All right. I do need a break and what do we have, two items left, so I do need to take a break. So let's do five minutes, come back at nine twenty-five. Meeting back to order. We're on item thirteen, approval and plans and specs for the PDA on Civic Center Drive. Mister Capurso, aren't you glad we just gave you money for this?
I was gonna say, I don't think there's anything left for me to say. I appreciate that. So we're here to talk about what we call the downtown Campbell PDA project, which I think, I think you're all familiar with. We had discussions about this during the CIP process. This is really, this is really derived out of a study that was done for pedestrian and bicycle safety in the downtown area many years ago. As Mayor Landry reported out on something else tonight, you might be the only one left from when the original study happened. So since that time, we have been trying to cobble together funding for different portions of what the construction would look like. You will recall that we were successful in getting, in getting OABAC funding to commence our design work just a few years back. And so we did the design process for all of the improvements that we have. That we have deemed would be worthy of construction over a certain period. And then based on funding, we had to cut those into construction phases. So the project that we proposed during the CIP process is what we're calling construction phase one. And it really focuses on the intersections of second and Civic Center and third and Civic Center. And those improvements are really all about, as I said, improving, improving the bicycle and pedestrian experience. And bringing those sidewalks and curb ramps into ADA compliance. Because you will recall, anybody that's walked out there, the homes that are on the south side of Civic Center Drive. We have shared, we have shared driveways and ADA ramps, which really is not compliant in anybody's world. So we need to make, we need to square off some intersections and increase visibility for the drivers, which will help increase the accessibility for our pedestrians. And bicyclists, particularly on routes that serve the downtown area. All that being said, we proposed that project back to you as part of the CIP. We had an original funding plan of nine hundred and ninety-five thousand. That would be largely funded with ARPA. We proposed that we would be able to use our remaining OABAC money from the design process. Carry that into this phase one of construction. And then with that, we would combine some funding from the vehicle impact fee, from our vehicle impact fees. And we would be able to put this out to bid. So all of that was true, except that we ran into a snag with the OABAC funding. The OABAC funding is available, but in order for us to carry it from the design phase to the construction phase. It would require approval at the regional level, which we would not be able to obtain until. Which we would not be able to obtain until, um, until like the spring or summer of twenty twenty-five. That is not a good combination with the constraints that we have on, on the ARPA funding. So essentially what we're proposing at this point is a funding swap that removes the, uh, the O-BAG funding from construction phase one. Puts it back in our remaining balance of our design project, but replaces that with some additional ARPA money. We'd be bringing some, uh, ADA, ADA curb ramp improvement money to the project as well. And increasing our, our vehicle impact fee funding. All of what I'm saying can be, is probably better summarized on page three, four of the, of the council report, where it talks about what the adopted budget was. And what we're proposing the adjusted budget, uh, adjusted budget to be. Also in that, uh, it, it's lost in there that we're actually reducing the, uh, the scope of the project by approximately forty-four, forty thousand dollars. So that was, that matches our construction estimate, gives us a little more flexibility, and we would like to move forward with that. Before we get to approval of the plans and specs, I would want to just go back and revisit that O-BAG money. That O-BAG money would, would still be there for, would still be available for us, and we are pursuing, uh, several other external funding sources for construction phase two. And, uh, for those of you that don't recall what phase two would be, phase two would be focused on the Harrison, Harrison Civic Center intersection, where we talked about having that reconfigured. And squared off, um, in conjunction with, with our, with our brand new library. So that would be one way, that would be another way to help, uh, help reduce vehicle speeds and increase bicycle and pedestrian safety in the downtown area. However, I'm getting ahead of myself, because at this point, what we are really seeking council to do is to approve the plans and specs. Uh, associated with this project, twenty-five DD, uh, authorize staff to solicit bids, award and approve the contract, and other associated actions. Those other associated actions are all the budgetary things, uh, that I just spoke of, which is why there is a budget adjustment attached to your council report. That really does all the, all the funding movement that I've described. Probably, probably too much detail about budget. I'm happy to answer questions about either the budget, budget or the scope or the project schedule at that point. But that is our recommendation. Thank you.
Questions? I did look at the plans and specs, Todd, it still shows the Harrison intersection. Are, so are the plans, the plans that you had the link to still show Harrison in the corner? I went through all the drawings. Is that, you're saying that's phase two?
That is phase two.
But it's in the drawing set right now, though.
I need to double check on why you're seeing that.
What?
That, that was, that was part of, 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 of the design. So as I say, our design, uh, has addressed all of the phases. So when we completed the design, it, it did cover all phase one, two, and three. But what we're, what we're asking authorization for is phase one only, which again is focused on the two intersections, Civic Center second, Civic Center third. So I will have to check on, by when you follow the link, you're seeing something different, and we will correct that.
Because I was ready to ask, how are you going to coordinate construction with the library? So the plans and specs on the link that you gave me still show the, all three of them.
Okay. I will address that.
Thank you for the clarification. I won't make any comments now about Harrison. Okay, and no one have questions? I'll open it to the public, is there anybody that would like to speak on this item? Anybody online? I forgot to ask that. Okay, none, I'll bring it back to council for discussion or a motion. I will point out that those houses that the second and third street, how many times have they gone through the garages and the corners and? There, there's numerous accidents that occurred, and this was started out as a safety problem and ADA compliance. Anybody want to make a motion? You could say so moved, or?
So moved.
I'll second.
Second motion, second roll call, please?
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Fertato?
What?
Councilmember Scazola?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye, that motion passes, we're down to number fourteen, the second reading of the ordinance updating the threshold the city management award drops.
Evening, Mayor, councilmembers, Rob Eastwood, Community Mal director. Given the lateness of the evening and the lateness of the item, I don't have much to add. This is the second reading of the ordinance. Of note, we have attached the administrative policy that provides details on how we'll implement capacity procedures. Note, it is in draft and we are finalizing it, uh, with the help of some feedback so far, there's some typos and minor corrections we're already amending. Uh, with that, I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Anybody have questions? I got a question. If this is the second reading, how can we still be making changes?
The ordinance is the second reading as informational item you have before you administer a policy, which is actually adopted and approved by the city manager.
But you're making corrections to it?
Yeah, well, the, the purpose of including that is because the policy refers to it, and we want the council to feel comfortable with what we're doing. It, it, we do show it in draft, um, there is, uh, some formatting, uh, some, some, uh, type of graphical errors that need to be corrected. And a few clarifications, uh, on one of the numbers, doesn't change the concepts in there, just adds providing more clarity in there. So we're sharing that with the council, we're not asking the council to approve the admin policy, we're including it with the item. Is council one being informed or approving the ordinance?
And there are no changes proposed to the ordinance?
There is no changes proposed to the ordinance, this is a secondary document, okay. Bill says it's okay, it's okay. All right, no questions, anybody from the public wish to speak on this item? Okay, we see none, I will bring it back for council motion or discussion.
I just wanted to be sure, I had passed on a couple of suggestions for more specific, specific, specificity? I can't pronounce that right, in a couple areas where I thought it wasn't real clear about the process, so I want to be sure that that was.
Those will be informed.
Okay, in the policy.
But no comments on the ordinance?
No, the ordinance is fine.
Okay. All right, anybody want to make a motion? So moved?
Move the adoption of item number fourteen. Uh, the recommended action.
I'll second.
Roll call, please?
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Fertato?
Aye.
Councilmember Scazola?
Me.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye, that motion passes, uh, next is committee reports, who'd like to start, Ann?
I attended the, uh, Cities Association meeting last week, and just, uh, an FYI, the date for the annual holiday party's been changed. And it's tentatively now Sunday, December fifteenth, or it could possibly be Sunday, December eighth. So hold both of those dates. And it's because of the venue that they chose, and that's the only night that they were able to accommodate the group.
What happened with the meeting to appoint, uh, the committees that, that got canceled?
That got canceled.
Are we rescheduling that?
Uh, that's to be determined.
To be determined, okay. All right, are you, that's it? Okay, Sergio?
Um, not much, other than I, uh, also attended the, uh, Cities Association, I was presenting, um, just providing an update, um, from, um, PTA. Um, and it's great to get some questions and, and, um, hear a little bit about the, um, the more local issues you don't always, um, hear about as much.
Dan?
Um, I attended the Superior Court Legislative Day. The judges of the Santa Clara County Superior Court invited members of the council, um, of all the councils to, um, uh, attend, um, a session. Where they talked about the Superior Court and the role of the court and the judges, and, uh, answered a number of questions about legal aspects and so on. It was very, uh, informative, um, very good, and, uh, and how they determine cases and the presiding judge and these kind of things. So it was a, a very worthwhile program down in Santa Clara.
Well, it?
Uh, yeah, well, first of all, all the friends of the Heritage Theater Board authorized the donation of thirty-five thousand dollars toward the purchase of a new soundboard, which was very sorely needed, so that was amazing on their part. Um, Silicon Valley Clean Energy, uh, board approved six million dollars to expand decarbonization programs and initiatives. The execution of a local Gilroy area, uh, long-term solar and storage projects, that's really exciting, having one right here in Santa Clara County. Um, and the allocation of a hundred thousand dollars for the expanded education fund, which I had the honor of seconding. Um, basically, this is to get more programs into schools, uh, within our region, uh, to educate, uh, about, you know, just everything, clean energy and. Essentially the future, our future, we, we want, it's always the kids that end up teaching their parents, right? And so, uh, I was really proud of that one in particular. Uh, SBC has a lot of great programs, education programs in particular, um, and that's about it on my part.
Okay, um, I attended the DCBA meeting. Uh, I had mentioned last council meeting that Ron from Public Works and myself did a parking sign analysis, uh, to determine if we need more parking signs. I gave that to them last month and I, they did not respond yet. Um, they did bring up the trees dripping of sap downtown, and I spoke with Todd about that. They didn't have problems before because there was a chemical that we used to get rid of the aphids, and the chemicals no longer allowed in California. And so I have to inform DCBA about that. Uh, Dan and I both attended the Double Tent Day. Um, we were honored to be able to present our proclamation, it was, I don't know, a couple hundred people that was there, it was very, very nicely, um, done. Uh, the same day, I attended the Saratoga State of the City, uh, and then PD had an open house, and I was there to watch all the fun things that they have. And all the great stuff we've given them. Uh, the Library Finance Committee met to approve the budget, and one note, item of note was the LAFTA, is that what it's called?
LAFCO.
LAFCO money was given back, and the city did not have to make a contribution to the library this year. I don't forget, I forget, it was like twenty or thirty thousand in previous years, but because they got this LAFCO, we didn't have to make a contribution. And then the last one is, um, last week, I was at the League of Conservation's, um, event to give a lifetime achievement award to Garneta Anable. Who was a very, is a very good friend of mine, and it was nice to be there, um, having her be recognized for thirty, forty years of, um, helping with open space. She was on the Open Space Authority, she was our rep, and it was a great, uh, time to honor her. With that being said, I will end the meeting. Thank you.